A lot of trouble here this morning. Call a meeting to order date o'clock with the pledge of flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had prior notice, a lot of notice, but missed it on the agenda, so. Okay, number one, can I have a motion to pay the bills? All in favor? Any opposed? Item two, twenty-four oh nine, final appropriations. Can I motion to suspend the rules? All's in favor? Any opposed? Motion to adopt the final appropriations? All's in favor? Any opposed? Ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash ten, setting the temporary appropriations for twenty-five. Can I motion to suspend? All's in favor? Any opposed? Motion to adopt? Any questions?
Yes. What is the time period that this is, it's just these numbers kind of correlate to?
Typically, you have until March thirty-first.
Any other questions? All those favor? Any opposed? The council meeting dates are on the back of the one sheet on your, in your packet. Have a motion to, in a second, to approve those for the new year? Any questions? Raise any questions?
Would like to know council's thoughts on moving the Wednesday, November fifth meeting from Wednesday to Monday, the third. Since we have to move that meeting anyway off the traditional Tuesdays, are there any objections?
No, it won't work because the board of election sets up all their equipment in this room on Monday.
What time Monday?
They said about around, I don't know, nine, ten o'clock in the morning, they start making their rounds.
I'd like to stay out of there with.
All right, no worries.
Nothing then?
Oh, see, I was, that was, I was playing, I looked at that date myself the other day and couldn't, didn't know that why, is why, but I was, I was looking for that one to potentially be moved as well.
Is there any?
I will, I can, I am, I'll still be here for that. It's no, it's the thirty-first.
Okay, anything else? All's in favor? Any opposed? The committee roster is there at bright yellow. Have a motion in a second to approve the new roster? Raise any new questions from last month?
Am I new on the planning and zoning commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I moved a few around.
And that's fine. Before I missed a lot of meetings.
We revise the ordinance. All's in favor? Any opposed? Employee handbook, you had that for the month, I asked if anyone had any issues in that to let me know so we could address them. Address them before the meeting, get ready, received nothing from anybody, so I.
First question is, do they require all of our employees to sign off that they have read and acknowledged the handbook?
I, I forget how it reads.
There's a couple different sections that had, like the harassment policy and there's, I think, one or two others, yeah.
It reads some, reads something.
Is that down the annual?
I'm gonna say no.
Just when there's a change?
That would be when you would want to do it.
Or a new employee.
So, at your new hire edition?
Well, this new one, everybody would sign for getting this, yes.
I just wanted, it seems like we're going back through every, every year, maybe it may changes.
But we don't, we have, I suppose we could, but.
There, yeah, there isn't, that's a, that can be policy driven, I mean, it doesn't invalidate.
Okay.
The provisions.
Deb, your comment was that we, they have an acknowledgement that they received it, not so much that they're ready?
Says I agree that no contractual relationship is created or.
Which is the absolute most important part of an employment handbook is to not create or imply that it's creating some kind of contractual employment for term or things that go beyond at-will employment, or, I mean, and, which is, I would say modified at-will employment when you're in public position, but that is the absolute most important thing and, and why I don't put it back in front of people as a, as a rule in my practice for preparing these on an annual basis, because you kind of want to have that in your, in your file, that everybody's looked at it and approved it, or they acknowledge they've seen it, that they know that it exists, and, and then you kind of tuck it away until you need it. And then follow the policies, obviously, along the way.
They receive, they receive.
Certainly means they have the opportunity to read it.
That's like, gotta assume that read it, it's like when we caught that guy stealing gas, his thing was, well, you're having in your handbook about stealing.
And that, and therein lies, rather extreme example, but therein lies the, the pitfall of having a handbook in the first place. Because you're not legislating every type of behavior, nor do we want to, there are certain things, and, and this, I think, the revisions in the previous version as well that are just obvious, that we're not going to put down in black and white, and that's totally fine, but, but in some of these grayer areas, that becomes maybe a more viable excuse, not so much when you're stealing. But, but in some gray areas that come along the way, well, it didn't say that in the handbook, so there's a fairly, I won't get into it, but fairly good Seinfeld episode, or there's a reference to that, so. But, but I think this one strikes the right balance of hitting the high points that you want to have policies for that maybe need to be written down, but then not trying to legislate everything, so.
Motion in a second to approve it? Any other questions? All's in favor? Opposed, same. So Debbie, you'll see that that book gets printed off and everybody's like, Dave's hands enough copies and for each of his people.
I'll print out a first copy for everyone here.
Yes.
Maybe we'll do something like colored paper too, I like that idea, stand out a little bit.
I do, I do too. Yes, and it also needs a table, I, I think she knows it needs a table of contents that we did not have in this. Item seven, I want to set a finance committee meeting in January, and we even have back there here, so we can get. Well. No, I, I was thinking discuss, well, we could do that, but I was thinking more of looking at our your imbalance the past few years, where we're going, how much we think we can take on. Where we think we're gonna go regarding the company, not the company, but township, things like that, but I don't want us to do finance committee meeting to totally do long-range planning, I think.
My, my reason for asking is, is there any reason to not have before the council meeting, so? And we, if we could meet at six o'clock on?
January seventh, that might be really early for me to get all the numbers together.
How about February?
January is fine, I was just thinking.
February, right before the meeting. That, that works about, that works about the same way.
If that's soon enough.
Sure, yeah, I, I, I don't have a particular rush in mind, but I don't want it to be too long, because we need to, we just need to talk about numbers.
But we need to have a long-range planning.
Yes, and, and maybe we do that at the meeting after our meeting, right after our meeting, be nice and fresh, we do, we've been doing long-range planning at our regular meetings the past few years.
We have, and I'm just, and as long as, as you don't feel February is too late.
No. No, Debbie, I don't think we were talking about anything that was, was pressing on that when we were talking.
I would prefer putting, putting them all in the same length, just knocking them out, I mean, generally, the council needs, you know, take that all, altogether too long.
Correct, why don't we plan on, on February, at six o'clock, for finance meeting and seven o'clock, council meeting, and? No, I, I think, I think we, we just open it and do a few, a couple of things, and then, yeah.
Just make that an agenda.
An agenda item for the council, yep, that's what I was thinking.
So you're saying, six o'clock? Well, for finance, yeah, finance committee.
And then we'll advertise it that way when the meeting comes.
So the finance meeting is just a finance committee?
Correct. Can I have a motion in a second to approve that date and time? Any other questions? All's in favor? Any opposed? Next item is informational. Were the trustees coming on the seventh? They were, okay, I didn't recall that.
That's what they said they wanted to do.
I, I think we probably need to confirm with them that.
Yeah, because they were, I mean, all three, the trustee said they could do it, they were gonna bring in fiscal officer in there.
Debbie, would you call their fiscal officer and tell her we're planning on them for the seventh? I don't want to do, I don't want to do it, I don't want to do them in February, because we got the long-range planning meeting.
They would, sorry, they're gonna notice that as a meeting, I mean, it'll essentially be a joint meeting. Perfect.
I guess while we're there, Rick and I were at their most recent meeting. Rick distinguished himself. Did you folks mostly read this thing? Well, Rick, Rick just tried to slip it in, he didn't, he didn't just come right out and hit him with a hammer, he just simply said, it sounds like you guys are wanting us to bail you out.
We can't bail them out.
I know, but that's.
We can bail them out if we vote on it, because that's what we did with the firehouse.
We can't vote on it. Are they gonna run the equipment through the township?
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to change the whole thing, we'd have, we'd have.
Yeah, it would require.
It would, it would require doing away with the fire district, it would require us coming together, and then we would have to pass not only say their, their new two-five, but we'd have to pass something to handle what they're already collecting. So with what they're already collecting, I knew we'd be something a little north of four miles, probably, that we'd have to ask our residents.
And I'm not.
We went through.
But regardless of that, and I'm, we're only talking about the structure, I'm not talking about support or which way on that. You can't dissolve a fire district overnight. They need funding to get. We dissolve, we, I mean, wouldn't the township or the residents of the fire district have to dissolve their own fire district?
I, I have no idea.
You would have, you would have to scrap the whole thing and then, and then revert back to, you know, the, the prior makeup, but the point I want to make is, we went through this whole process of backing and supporting and driving the creation of a fire district to get us out of the fire business. We don't want to give. Why do we want to go back to being in the fire business?
We, we don't, but that's what they want.
I understand that, but I'm, I'm just saying.
And they were, at the time, they were, wanted everything they can do to get their hands on it. And be able to drive that.
That's right. That's right.
We, we, you say it differently than I was, I would have said we just, you know, we acquiesced to their wishes, but.
Well, it was mutually beneficial at the time, and, and the biggest benefit to us was, you know, as you recall, we had gone through a succession of fire chiefs following the implosion of the department, when Jack Snotty went off the rails and, and and then there was.
They need to figure out a way to fund this thing.
The guy who wanted me to die.
Mike Carson, and and when it was just, we were fed up with trying to well, battle the township at every turn on the management and, and the funding of the department, and that's why we embraced the concept of a fire district.
And they wanted it, they wanted.
So for current term, why are they coming to us? Because.
They want, because they need money, they can't pass a levy without.
They want to talk, yeah. And well, as, as we get going that, that night, everybody's involved here, yeah, be sure everybody's involved that night, that.
I would encourage all of you to ask a lot of questions, because, I mean, I've asked a lot of questions, and, I mean, I've been to all these meetings and stuff like that. They're in, they are very close to being in a fiscal emergency, they're one major breakdown away from pulling out.
The township or the fire district?
Fire district. I mean, they literally have like sixty thousand dollars in their, in their coffers. And, I mean.
I know what happens to a school district when that happens, what happens to a fire?
That's a good question, I have no idea. But, I mean, we're their biggest customer, other than their residents, but, you know, it's, my, my concern is, is if they get to that point, what does that do for the services that are being provided to our residents? And what's, what's their option, I mean, what, what's plan B? Well, and we, well, and it's, obviously, residents are, are, all of our constituency is critical, but we've got a very large corporate constituent that is gonna have a hell of a lot to say about any projected decline in fire service. Yeah, so, you know, so I would encourage all of you guys to ask, you know, think about it between now and then, and, and just start asking the questions, because I've asked a question, and it's kind of fallen on deaf ears, but, okay, you know, you try to go against your, get your residents to buy, you know, this, have you guys went to Seville, have you went to Lafayette, have you went to Lowdy, have you thought outside the box of creating or starting the creation of a southern fire district in Medina County? Make, increase the size of the district, every, every other department and district is facing a lot of the same issues. And, and my guess is you're gonna get a deer in the headlights from those three, because it hasn't happened.
Well, Mike, the next question I have though for us is, should we be looking, we have, when the, should we be looking elsewhere, let me finish that statement? Because in the years past, when we had a renewal, we looked to see potentially what other districts would provide us.
So the way the contract is, and correctly from wrong. The contracts written, we have to give them two years' notice if we're gonna pull out, however, if they can't fulfill their end of the obligation in the contract, then yes, we have the opportunity to go somewhere else.
I did double check that part of it, I, but that sounds right, I know the, if you're just leaving for any reason.
I'm not recommending we do that, but we are not, one of the things I think we try to pride ourselves in is not being surprised, and so if things are that tight, we ought to know where we're going.
Well, yes, and that, that's where it gets into a very delicate situation, because once you start having those conversations, you know, I'm not sure anybody else will take it, for one thing, nobody has come right out and said, yeah, sure, Westfield, we'd love to have, and we, I don't know that. I mean, we made the assumption that Seville would, but I'm not sure they would. And that's, you know, how do you, how do you strike up that conversation with the township, trust me?
Okay.
Why, I think, I think, but we need to not lose sight of that, we, we need to make sure we have plan B in our back pocket.
Well, I think, I think plan A for them is what you just outlined. If things are getting that tight, they need to, to be, they need to be doing something else.
It sounds like we're their plan B.
We are there, that's why I said that, I mean, I mean, if you read that article, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're looking for us to bail them out.
I don't think that's realistic.
Well, I don't appreciate, you know, the fact that they, they gave those quotes, and that, you know, I guess it was a public meeting and
It was a public meeting with the fire chief and the consent, that was the only members, their audience.
Yeah, so, so in other words, it was, it was, it sounds like it was premeditated, and putting the word out there to the public that to pressure the village into participating in, in another levy.
Well, I had the wrong night marked on my calendar, and so I missed it, and, and then I, then I read this, and I was, but I wasn't there trying to answer those questions, I mean, how, how many of those questions you think they'd have fired at me if I'm sitting there? A lot of it, and so they had to handle it themselves, and that's where they chose to go.
I asked them to bring with them to the meeting their two thousand and twenty-four financial numbers, how did they end the year, what was their revenue, what was their operating expenses, and so on and so forth, because that's gonna paint a picture, but, I mean, you know, all you gotta do is read between the lines, they're in trouble, I mean, big trouble.
Now, Craig raised important point there, how important is it that I talked to Kirk Berry and asked if somebody from the company at that meeting with, with the trustees to for their benefit to listen?
I think, I think it's, I think it's a good idea, I, I think.
Nothing else to just let them know that we're looking out for their interest.
Be aware that, that this is on the horizon, and that, you know, there is a potential for a drop in services, or in a, in a worst-case scenario, an outright disruption.
They probably are aware of.
I don't know if they're aware of the financial trouble. Yeah, that was.
Just to, just to clarify, I pulled up the contract, it is a two-year notice, generally, one year if, if there's service level issues, which is a little bit more specifically defined in the contract, so there really isn't an at-will exit that's shorter than a year for the village, so even, even in the scenario where the service levels drop off, so.
Well, in a worst-case scenario, you'd, you'd have to pay for a year, even though you're.
Pay them and have somebody else affiliate the service, I think, is a, a scenario, right, that could come into play.
And so let's say they do get into fiscal emergency, can the township loan them money, or do they have, I mean, how does that work?
Man, that, that is, I would not be comfortable.
That's a whole separate, but they're not part of the.
It's, it's, it's own entity.
It isn't the township.
Right.
It's, it's, it'd be the state or somebody, or the county, I mean.
I don't think it'd be the county either. I'm not speaking for what the county would do.
You were saying something.
Yeah.
I'm just, we definitely need a plan B for our own sake, because my one concern would be that Westfield would agree that we need to help them to make sure that their fire service stays at, at a good service level. Yes, and I don't want to get pinned between two large people saying you have to do it, and then what do we do? So I think we have to have an option that helps the insurance company.
One of the things that if we, let's, let's throw the Seville thing out there, okay, Seville says, sure, Westfield, we'd love to have, that's gonna cost us a lot more. There's no question about it, because their village is much greater than the current village we're paying.
You're saying that will cost a lot more on the assumption that the contract looks the same as this contract does?
Well, if they say, yes, exactly.
Well, unless, unless you can get on a kind of contract basis per call.
Right.
Because I don't know that you, I don't know that the village would, because Seville is so much bigger than the current district, I don't know that the village would step up and say, and do, and make the same arrangement to be part of Seville that has been part of the Westfield.
How does Gloria Blunt do it with Lafayette?
They joined the district.
They're part of the district, yeah.
So they're paying the same.
Although their village is, I believe, separate, I believe they have a separate levy, at least they did. Maybe they rolled into.
I think they're, I think they are all into the district, and, and herein lies, I think, the benefit of not being part of the district, but perhaps also the curse, because you've got options that you wouldn't have, if you're part of the district, you're at the mercy of the fact that these levies aren't passing, and then you're talking about dissolving a district, not what are the village's options, but you can have a village-specific conversation about where do we go from here, which is essentially where, where you're at.
You know, the, the immediate concern needs to be, what can we do quickly, which would be proper, you know, joining the Seville district.
Well, we did.
Contracting with them on a per-run basis, or even involving Lowdy for a piece of it, or whatever. And, and then the longer-term conversation needs to be
Well, does their mutual aid?
Assisting them with driving a a southern Medina County district. Because I think that's, that's the best long-term solution, because that would involve everybody, and.
But we agree, but they are, they are so opposed to something like that.
Historically, they have been.
Yeah, but their back is against the wall now, they didn't want to have to give up any control, but I think they have to understand now that that's, that's, that's no longer.
But Mayor, when you say they, you mean Seville, or you mean Westfield? Okay, because I know historically.
Doing anything, and, and their chief is against, and I think if they get too much going into that, their chief will, will definitely leave, you'll see the handwriting on the wall, and gone. So they're facing a lot of pressure, a lot of ways on this.
They, who is their chief? You're talking about Chief Hall, right?
Yes, I'm talking about Chief Hall, yes, I'm talking about Chief Hall.
I think it's smart on our part to at least get numbers and start going down that road, let's fill, if that's our, or Lowdy, and see what run, cost per run is, so we have a backup, so even if we end up staying with them and redoing contract and everything works out, we at least have a backup if the bottom falls out and there's no service.
But isn't their service because of mutual aid?
There is, but I, I think what would happen is, in, in the, in the long term, they would become very stressed, both Lowdy and Seville. Yeah, mutual aid is, that's, that's that stopgap to provide that support when your fire department, you know, if they're on another call or something like that, it's not basically, if they were out of business, it will be picking up all your, no, that's, that's not mutual aid.
Well, we'll probably have a little better feeling for how we feel after that meeting on the seventh, but I, I caution all of us that when you start talking to Seville or Lowdy about pulling out, that, that gets back to them overnight, and that's a big deal, I mean, I'm not saying don't, I'm just, I'm just telling you, that is a big deal.
If we have two years that we have to wait, we can't wait any longer and let them fail, and then wait two years after they fail, because we haven't given them notice.
We're not, well, it's the, you know, it's December twenty. We're not, well, it's the, you know, it's December twenty-seventh, I, I. You know, I, 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 I don't think we should be talking to anybody prior to the meeting.
Oh, no.
Right, no, no, no.
No, we're not, we, we, we aren't.
But I, I, I think it's a good threat to make.
I don't even think it's, I don't even think it's a threat as much as it's making them aware of.
Yeah, I mean, this is what we believe our obligation. This is what we're gonna do.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it's.
You know, I would basically look at all three of them and say, put yourself in my shoes. Okay? You know?
Right.
We got twelve hundred residents and we got eighteen hundred people who go to work across the street, one of the largest employers in the county. Just think of that. All equally.
And we're getting concerned. Mi- Mike raised an interesting, uh. Fact at that meeting we were at. Apparently the school had an issue on a while back where they were, uh. Lowering millage. They're gonna quit on one, one levy if you pass this one and it would be less money for the residents. And everybody in every, he said, every township in the district voted yes, you know, strongly because. It'd be less money, except Westfield, they voted, they're, they've, as a group, they voted against, they voted no. Now that's, now that, that, that's, that's a lot to say when you're gonna pay less money and you vote no. I mean, I was kind of shocked.
Well, I, and the way millage works, I'd have to see that scenario because the millage can be lower if it's a totally new levy. Cause the millage is lower, but it's on the new rates and if the old millage is still there and it's twenty years old.
It was dollars, it was dollars, it came out dollars.
Been a while since Westfield voted down something else. I think that. So, so his, his comment is he doesn't think they need the village thing.
Oh, no, oh, no, oh, no, oh, no. They, they, they desperately did.
I think he was using it to underscore how difficult it is to pass a levy.
He was, he was trying to describe his own people.
It's his, is it the township voters voted no?
Yeah.
Oh, the township.
Township.
Oh, I thought you said the village voted no.
No, the township, there only ones in the whole district voted no.
Cause they wanted to vote no.
Well, the thing that, that bothers me too about, you know. The, the township may have done a little more. This time around than they did in the prior two attempts, but. Whatever more they did wasn't a whole lot. And every time we, we've, we've, we've met with them and, and in my case, it was only a couple of different meetings, but I hammered the point that. What are you doing different to get this levy passed? Because you, 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 your messaging, your marketing, your strategy, what is happening to make this happen? Well, you know, we're having, we're having some more meetings.
Well, they, they.
But I mean, you, you need boots on the ground. You need to go door to door. I don't think that happens.
Well, it's more than that, I think, because they, uh, they had organized opposition. Not only, not just likely, but they had other organized opposition. In fact, I, I was kind of shocked when Mike said they had to take all the, the posters off the building on voting day. That people put on over during the night that said, vote no. I mean, that's, that, that's organized opposition. And I think they got to approach their organized opposition. I think they gotta make some, hear what they're complaining about and make some changes. In, in what they're looking at to, to take these people in, to get them with them. Like likely, I, I, I think I've told some of you, I had lunch with him to see what, how his problem was, and he's always all about that big truck. And, uh. I, I think if they solve the big truck problem with likely, he probably would come in with them because he knows they need money. I'm sure there's some things with other people.
The big truck thing either because.
I don't either, but that's where.
They haven't even said, if they do pass this levy, what they're going to buy.
Well, they have said, oh, yes, they've said they buy, they're gonna buy that big truck. Oh, yes, they have.
Yeah, they.
Oh, yes. That nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck is part of the two and a half million that they'll collect over five years of this levy. And then that's where Jim's complaint is. He says, contract for Lowdy or Seville for those. When you need that big truck and put that money in all kinds of other things.
Oh, yeah. That was a big part of the, the first meeting that the three of us went to.
Yeah, yeah, big truck.
My takeaway was well.
I just think they gotta somehow get some of these people in because I agree with what you said, Greg, but you can have all the boots on the ground and all the, whatever you want. But if you've got organized opposition out there in a, in a public sector, you're in trouble. You're in.
Well, and, and, and I guess that, that, that further illustrates my point. I mean, they're, they, they're not doing what they need to do.
Yes.
To get the, if you've got organized opposition, to your point, you need to confront that.
You need to.
And if, and if you're, if you, if you don't have people going door to door. Educating people, then, then you need to be doing that. And I just, you know, they, they put out another. You know. PowerPoint showing a lot, a lot of people that were meeting that don't show up and then they, they, they consider that their campaign and I'm, I'm oversimplifying. I'm probably not being fair. But my point is, I mean, you know, every time you ask them, what are you doing? What are you doing? You don't, you get a bunch of generalities. And not very little specifics on. On how they're attempting to, you know, to reach the voters.
Well, so, you know, if they do put anything on, it'll be in November. And it won't start growing until twenty-six. And that's a big if it passes. So, I mean, for us, this, go, going back to, okay, what's our plan B? I mean. You know, they failed three times. Going back to Greg's comment, they haven't done anything differently. So what's, what's to make us think they're gonna do anything differently coming November? Which is gonna result in the same, you know, you keep doing the same thing over and over, you get the same results.
I think their difference is coming here. That's what.
That, well, that's what they're hoping for.
That's what they're hoping for.
Do they?
Oh, yes.
I'll be perfectly honest, I don't want to get back into fire business.
No. So.
But I know Debbie doesn't want back into fire business.
My question, my question to you all would be. What is the best case scenario? That, what they say to us next month that we would get on board, like, right? Sorry, yes, in a week. Is there, is there anything, you know what I mean? Like, what's gonna make them change our minds? Not that we would get on board in the fire. Business, but to make things have a different outcome for November for us to. They just need a whole new game plan?
There, there's nothing we can do.
I know there's nothing we can do, but is there something that they can say that they could?
I don't know.
Do we want to see a restructure of how they're operating internally? Do we want to see not as large trucks on the levy?
Somebody else.
Cause that's what they're gonna ask. What will it take?
Some, some federal, I mean, some governmental entity over, over top of them, over whatever should be asking those questions if they only have sixty thousand dollar. Obviously though, come January first. Well, come January first, we're gonna pay our, our. Do we pay quarterly or we pay in a semi annual? Well, let's see, that's what I think they're gonna come to us with and ask us if we'll pay, pay for twenty twenty, uh. Twenty-five upfront.
I don't, I don't think so. Might be, I, I thought it maybe would, but it somehow come out at that meeting, but I, I, it could be, I, I don't know. But I think to answer Julie's question there from my perspective is that, that's probably where we, what more could we do? Uh, the only we can do is throw out suggestions about getting at what their problems are. Uh, the problems aren't just sticking it on levy. Their problems are dealing with electric.
Yeah.
As a support.
But Tom, think about it. You asked the question and I asked the question to Terry. When. The question was, Jim Likely's got this four foot by four foot sign in his yard that says, vote no. For the fire levy, ask me why. And my question was to Terry. Has any one of those three township trustees called him and said, hey, let's have a conversation?
No.
No.
I know. They finally, one, I think Kent finally did.
Finally called after you and I.
After we both pressed her and she told her, and, and she had to tell them that Tom and Rick. Have pressed me on what we've done to talk to him about this. I mean. What do, we didn't have anything to do with that, we just asked the question, but she had a. Use us as a wedge to get one of, to Kent, Kent to talk to him. And this was late in the campaign.
Yeah. I mean, as many times as I've been by Jim's house, if I would have saw him out in the yard, I would have pulled in and said, okay. What is wrong?
Yeah.
But I never did. I'm not gonna make a point.
You know, when, when I, when I met with him and he, he's an important factor in this thing, cause he talks to a lot of people. He used to not, was not angry. He, you know, he was not a Carol, a, a, another person they used to have there. He was just. Whether you agreed with him or not, he was very rational and asking a question and, and trying to, I, I mean, it was. It was different than I thought it would be. I thought he would be an angry person. Well, it's not angry. They need the money. It was just. Hell, I'd, I, I'd scrap that truck right down the road to get him on my side. I, I would because I think he's important. I, I, he was a trustee twelve years, talks to a lot of people, et cetera. Well, anyhow, we, let's, let's move on.
Will.
We'll go for Monday night and see what.
I'll be here next week.
See what happens.
Um, I think one of the things that we should probably do is, and I can do this, is reach out to the trustees. And ask them for their agenda of what they want to talk about with the county.
Sure.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
You know.
Yes. And, uh.
Whatever agenda they have for us at, at our own meeting, if we can, if we can get our hands on that.
Right.
And I, I would, if you.
Send them ours too.
Not today, by the first of the week. Ask them for that.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna have to have them because this is a, this is a formal meeting.
And, and also then, then Debbie's gonna let them, let. Fisk office, you know, for sure to let all them know so they're here on, on the Saturday. They said they wanted this at our meeting, but, uh, for them to get all these people together and get here, I believe, I see it, so.
Probably be helpful for their.
And then they, they wanted to do that. That's exactly right. They, they mentioned that, have, they have their law director from the, uh. Prosecutor from the county.
Prosecutor.
Prosecutor, yeah. All right, I'm gonna move on here. Uh, item nine. Uh. Debbie, tell them what we just got.
Uh, we received a notice that we, um, had an additional three hundred thousand for the language level project.
What are you falling out of sky? Is that what we were looking for? I thought we were looking for four eighty, not.
Not the four eighty. So we have that and, um, they're, they're giving us another three hundred. We still have the application out there. For OPWC for, I think it was two fifty-five, two hundred and fifty-five thousand. So, uh, with all of that, maybe, you know, not too much will come out of the village pocket. We'll have to see. Not exactly sure, um, that these grants will pay for the engineering. You know, there's some pieces that they won't cover. So there will be some villagers out of pocket. Um, I don't think that, uh, these grants will pay for, um, any of the. Uh, easement deals that we have to do. So, um, yeah, but it's great news.
Easement, are we hired an independent?
Whatever those are. I, I don't know that much worry.
Whatever keys, yeah, like.
Yeah.
Is, is that what we do is hire independent to come up with a fair working value of that property? How does that, how does that work? What you said last time that, um.
We thought he was gonna.
He was gonna recommend, I think we were gonna have to hire.
Okay.
I think that was it. We're gonna have to hire and then.
But he hired somebody?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
He's been negotiating.
I think he's coming with a plan, with a recommendation.
And I think we're looking to them as to how negotiations start, when, all that kind of stuff, but that's.
I think we're fortunate, there's only four people involved, but then again, there's four people involved, so it's worth someone.
Sounds good news.
Yeah, I was a troublemaker. I don't want to back, oh, excuse me.
This way.
Oh, dear. Oh, dear.
I think I was on a hot mic there. I got anything else before we go into executive session? And I have a motion in a second to go into executive session. Now, there will be, uh, action afterwards. Uh.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, I guess you made a roll call, I believe I made.
Yeah, roll call. Uh, Terry?
Hi.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Hi.
Yes.
Great.